Start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, my nation and her God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Anker, would you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Steen.
Present.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember Austin.
Present.
Jordal.
Present.
Bowden.
Present.
Carolyn.
Present.
Enright.
Present.
King.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. With the addition, we have number five, some additional material under five. With that addition, we need a motion for adoption of the agenda.
Your Honor, we have item 22 added also. And then if we could eliminate number two, approval of minutes, we'll put them on the next agenda.
Okay, now, we have a 20...oh, I see that's written in here. Okay, which one are we eliminating?
Eliminate number two, approval of minutes.
You don't have minutes. Okay, with those additions and deletions, we need a motion.
Some second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number three, are there any citizens present tonight that wish to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda? No, ma'am, you're not going to get in a wrestling match tonight, are you?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council.
You're supposed to give us your name. There might be people that don't know your name. Your name and address.
Oh, Matthew Simonson, 607 Seventh Avenue Southeast. Anyway, I commented concerning the last meeting, you may remember that, well, I promote rights of common citizens a lot of times. And anyway, last meeting, Austin's HRA manager, the Reverend, was trying to bully me off the podium. And worst of all, the pastor falsely accused me of crimes here in public. Anyway, in the 50-year history of this building, I bet that's the first time that that has happened. And anyway, I'm sort of surprised, I don't think the city council did anything about that. And anyway, it's sort of against free speech and such, but otherwise, some of you may remember that in the January meeting, the mayor exploded at me. And anyway, that seemed to be out of place a bit, I thought, too. Anyway, generally, I'm against...it seems like the city council seems to promote the interests of hormones and private bankers too much, who are privileged to break laws, and it's sort of against justice and equality of the common people. And sort of, I object to the government that...Austin government that sort of promotes this kind of double standard, which, if you know the definition, that is fascist. That's all I have.
Thank you, Matt. Anybody else? Okay, we will move on.
Your Honor, there was someone in the corner.
Come on up. Need your name and your address.
Jim Davis, 727th Avenue Northeast, Austin. And I'd just like to bring up on our...on the Lansing sewer part, it's been more than a year since we went to court. There was a question before about the October date. That was a...that was a response to the judge's question about when this was going to be resolved, when it was going to be reappraised or whatever the city decided to do. And the city's response was that it would be done by October. The attorney representing the city said, asked, I believe, Mr. Lang, I'm not sure, I wasn't there, but I asked my lawyer, and he said it was...or our lawyer, he said it was in response to the judge's question about when this is going to be done. That was seven months ago. And we've been sitting in limbo ever since. We can't...we can't go on with plans to, if we want to refinance our house, if we want to finish our landscaping. We can't do anything about this until it's resolved. And now the city is jumping ahead with another sewer project along the same lines, assessment the way it looks like, which the city already knows is illegal, even if the people don't object, it's still illegal. It's no different than if a policeman pulls me over on the way home for speeding and says, "Well, I'm not going to give you a ticket," but I was still breaking the law." And the city knows this assessment process is breaking the law. And also, I'd like to know what the cost was for the last court proceedings to the city, because I'm also a taxpayer besides fighting the city on this. The lawyer fees, the...all the payments, the court costs and everything that the city had to pay to resolve the case before, now they're doing it the same way again. And our lawyer advises me that even if it's called a hookup fee, it's still, we were forced into annexation, it's just a different name for the same proceeding. And I would appreciate it, and all of us would, if this could get resolved before you go on to the next project. It was promised to be done...
Okay, I talked to you and told you that we tried...that it wasn't going to be done before summer was over, so you know this already.
Well, yeah, but...
So, coming here tonight, if we could get it done any faster.
No, you told me that there was no October date. There was an October date, the city promised to have it done by last October.
I'm not going to argue this now, we have a lot of people here, we have a lot of business...
Yeah, well, I'm also here.
...so, I wanted to give us a call, and you know, you could have done...you could have called up and gotten this taken care of.
No, because the people need to know what's going on here. And the people also need to know what the cost is. And it's continuing, and if you do it again, it's going to continue again, and we're incurring costs, too.
We're aware of the lawsuit, we're aware of how it was done, and I think that's been taken into...some of that's been taken into consideration. I know we didn't invite you to the meetings that we discussed this on, but we have the people from Turtle Creek here tonight. If there are objections, we're going to handle them differently than we did the last time, I think. So, you know, we're doing that.
Okay, I'd just like you to focus on getting our problem taken care of.
You know, and I told you the last time that we were...
It was promised to be done seven months ago, and still...and now you're saying the end of summer...well, when's the end of the summer? October? Another year? I mean...
Well, I've tried talking a couple of times, you cut me off, so I guess I won't answer you anymore. Okay, we'll do whatever...you know, we'll try. And we are trying, we are absolutely trying. I told you the last time that we were trying to move the process fast, faster, but we're, you know, we're...this is how it works. I mean, I'm not happy that it worked so slowly. If there was a way of speeding it up, I would. We're not going...you know, this isn't intentional that we're...you know, these are legitimate concerns that you and the other people have.
It is definitely intentional, because the city was warned before this started that what they were doing is illegal. That's all I bet you say.
It's not intentional, I guarantee you that.
It was intentional.
Okay, well, we agree to disagree on that.
Well, I don't agree with you.
Well, okay. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Why don't you come up, give us your name and address.
Roger Jorgensen, 2906 Eleventh Street Northeast, Austin. And my question is to Steve. When are you guys going to do my...end of my driveway? We've talked about this, and this has been going on since they put the sewer in. And that driveway was not patched. When you guys started, and you said you would put things back the way it was, and it's not happening.
Mr. Jorgensen, I've met with you multiple times regarding your driveway, and last time you were up, I did stop out and talk to you about your driveway, looked at your concerns, and I will...I think at that time, we couldn't come up with a resolution on what needed to be done. I think we had some patching, possibly around a manhole that is located near the end of your driveway. I can sure come out again, I'll give you a call, come out again, see if anything's changed over this winter, as to what's occurring there with your driveway, and try and get that resolved.
Well, I appreciate it getting done. I mean, this has been a long time, and I don't like water standing in the end of my driveway. I'm already got a disc...I'm disabled. And if I fall out there because of ice and stuff come wintertime, I'm going to sue the city.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, move on. Under awards and recommendations, probably have a proclamation declaring April 25th, 2014 as Arbor Day, and the month of May 2014 as Arbor Month. And I have the proclamation I'd like to read here. Whereas trees and forests provide a natural playground for all ages, and whereas trees and forests provide an unstructured play environment that encourages exploration, creativity, and activity, and whereas childhood exposure to forests and trees lays the foundation for responsible environmental behavior and conservation values as an adult, and whereas the recreational opportunities provided by Minnesota's forests enhance the state's economy, and whereas each year on the last Friday in April and throughout the month of May, Minnesotans pay special tribute to the trees and all the natural resources they represent, and dedicate themselves to the continued vitality of our state forests. Now, therefore, I, Thomas Steen, Mayor of Austin, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2014 as Arbor Day, and the month of 2014 as Arbor Month in the city of Austin. So, moving forward, where are we at? Item number five, we need a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number six, under bids and award, receiving bids for the replacement of heating and air conditioning units at the senior center. Mr. Lang.
We have identified in our CIP the replacement of two heating and air conditioning units at the senior center. Those are original to the building's construction from 1991. We received three bids, with the low bidder being Greenman Heating and Refrigeration, Inc., in the amount of $18,825 for this replacement. This cost reflects a $2,000 to $4,000 rebate from Austin Utilities that's already been incorporated in. And we're using the bids based on both cost and efficiency. Greenman is the logical choice based on those. We have a $25,000 Home and Foundation grant that we will be using to fund this project. And in review, we'll review any additional work that needs to be done as part of this replacement. If there's any ductwork improvements or anything like that, that would be in additional to their bid amount, but we'll try to get everything resolved with one project here with Greenman, and we'd recommend moving forward.
Counsel, any...
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Anker.
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Bowden.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Now, we now are coming to a public hearing, so we need a motion resolving the city council into the Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, number seven is a public hearing on a variance requested by Roddingham Real Estate LLC for property located at 910 West Oakland Avenue. Mr. Hoyam.
During our April 15th meeting of the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission reviewed a variance request for the 5% green space for those properties located within a B2 community business district. If you look at this property under question, the surrounding land uses are a combination of both residential and commercial properties. If you look at the monitor, I've got an aerial photo of a...
Mark, will you get the computer ready?
Does this...
Oh.
Smaller figures. There you go. Okay. Start over again here.
Okay.
I've got an aerial photo here of the property in question, and actually, a previous condition. If you look at the quarry lot of West Oakland Avenue and Ninth Street Northwest, this is the existing subway property. And the petitioner has actually purchased a smaller lot to the north, where at one time there was a single-family home and a detached garage. Since that time, the petitioner has removed those structures, and since last fall, I think they've been using that parcel with a granular surface as off-street parking. Again, on the monitor, shows the two properties in question. This property, south of the purple line, is actually the B2 Community Business District. North of that line is an R2 multifamily residence district. And if you look at the layout up in the top right-hand corner of this plan, it shows what is being proposed for both a new off-street parking lot and also green space. If you look at the existing condition, the subway store had eight off-street parking stalls prior to the acquisition of the lot to the north. And with the proposed plan, there would be seven additional stalls provided. To accomplish the...this number of off-street parking stalls, there would have to be a variance of 5% toward the 20% green space. In reviewing this with the Planning Commission, I reviewed the redevelopment site. If you look at the total area, we're just over 9,100 square feet. The building size is 988 square feet. One example that I reviewed with the Planning Commission is if one of those off-street parking stalls were eliminated, that would reduce the variance request to actually 3.2% instead of 5%. After reviewed by the Planning Commission, there was a recommendation made to the city council to deny the request. That denial came from needing more detailed information, addressing the calculation for the number of off-street parking stalls. There was a letter that was forwarded to the council today that kind of described some of the challenges that they have in meeting this 20% green space, and have requested that the city council consider approving the requested variance with the 15 stalls. I did receive a call from John Howell, who owns adjacent properties to this, and he indicated that he was not in favor of the request, and said he would sell the petitioner property to meet the 20% green space. Otherwise, that's all I have to report if there's any questions.
Also?
On the current property, is there any green space at all?
Actually, not. One other thing, the petitioner has proposed, there is a boulevard, I believe, adjacent to Ninth Street that is currently all hard-surfaced, and they're proposing to remove that hard-surfacing and converting that into green space. That does not go into the calculation for the green space requirement, but they're just doing that in an effort to improve the aesthetics of the property.
Anything else, Your Counsel?
Is there currently a fence around this space at all, like on the east side?
They have acquired permits. In our off-street parking ordinance, there is a requirement that a...at least a three-foot-high fence or vegetative screen is provided between the off-street parking lot and any residential property.
Mr. Hoyam, do you have a recommendation?
Well, I talked to the petitioner's design professional today, and as you can see in that letter that he wrote in response to that conversation, the goal in acquiring that other property and being able to achieve additional off-street parking, and the size of that parcel makes it very difficult to accommodate the required off-street parking. I guess if I was to consider approving the variance, I would make the motion to reduce the off-street parking stalls to 14, which meets the off-street parking requirement, and would add additional green space in eliminating that one stall.
Anybody else?
I do think that they're making a great effort to improve the looks of the property. I think just putting grass in the boulevard is really going to make, you know, the business look a lot nicer. The fence with the privacy tabs through there. I think that I'd like to make a recommendation that we do, as Craig Hoyam says, and reduce it to 14 stalls.
Okay, before we entertain motions, this is a public hearing, so does anybody in the audience...is there anybody here that came here tonight to address this issue? Because this is your time. Okay, if not... I'll second the motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second with Mr. Hoyam's additions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. I think it is...okay, we need to adjourn back into the...oh, wait a minute, one more thing, approving...oh, we did that. I need to adjourn the Board of Adjustments and Appeals back into the city council. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Number eight is a public hearing on sanitary sewer and water improvements for Turtle Creek 1, 31st Street Northwest, Oakland Avenue to Cedar Avenue, Project 1B13. Mr. Lang.
Yes, I had a meeting with these residents back on April 3rd. There's approximately 28 parcels in this area, and gave the same presentation to them at that time, answered questions, and now I wanted to bring it to the council as part of the public hearing process. This area is identified in yellow. It was area located adjacent to 31st Street Northwest and adjacent to I-90, kind of west of I-90. A little bit of history on the project. Ellingson Companies in April of 2013 was hired by the township to do a community assessment report and evaluate the septic systems for the parcels in this area. And in...one year later, approximately...excuse me, a month later, in May of 2013, council authorized staff to work to develop an order annexation agreement. When Ellingson did their presentation to the township board and also the property owners in this area, they gave multiple options for the property owners. Those options were installing new septic systems, making updates to their current septic system, or doing a combined system that then came into the city of Austin. And that ultimately was what the property owners chose, and that's what then led to council authorizing staff to continue to work on the annexation agreement. In this past January of 2014, the property was annexed to the city of Austin, and since then, we have been working on the project design, which brings us to where we're at tonight. The design includes a gravity system that will serve 24 existing homes and one church. There are three low-pressure systems that are part of a...that have a grinder pump system. We would propose connecting to the city of Austin system in Crest Haven Edition at Second Avenue and 27th Drive Northwest. There would be a directional boring underneath Interstate 90. And then, the gravity sewer system for those 25 parcels would be stubbed to the property line. And then, the grinder pump system would be installed adjacent to the home of those three parcels that have the proposed grinder pump system. We would need easements. I believe there are two easements that would be required as part of this project to get the gravity system across Interstate 90 and to this area. And then, the disturbed roadways would be replaced with the existing rural section and ditches. If it's currently...some of these roads are aggregate, they would go back in as aggregate. If it happens to be an asphalt roadway, it would go back in as asphalt. The map on your screen kind of shows the proposed sanitary sewer layout. I talked about the connection to the city system would be located right here at Second Avenue and 27th Drive, going underneath Interstate 90 and proceeding to service the area. We've shown a lot of extensions of sewer services as to where those would be proposed or could possibly go by the property owners. Again, we would stop at the property line, which is out in this area here, and then it would be up to the homeowner to extend it back from there. But we wanted to show the property owners where a possibility was for them to make that sewer connection. And then, located up here on the north end of the project is where those three, 1, 2, and 3 grinder pump systems would be located. Again, some of those property owner requirements would be to work with us on sanitary sewer easements. We have two easements that are required, one on each side of Interstate 90. The property owners would then also need to make those connections from the property line to the home. They would have to work with an existing...or a licensed plumber to do that work, remove their existing septic tank, or break down their existing septic tank, one of those two. And then, if it's just a sewer-only project, they would need to install a meter on their well to monitor their well usage, which then determines their monthly sewer bill. If...as part of the annexation agreement, it was determined that if you have a compliant septic system, you will have up to five years to make the connection from your house to the service stub. All of these properties in this area have been reviewed by the Moore County septic system personnel to determine their compliance, and that's what really initiated this project. I believe there are two properties that are compliant, others have different degrees of non-compliance. Parcels with low-pressure system will be connected at the house with the project. This will result in addition...an additional $2,000 per parcel for those three parcels that have that low-pressure system. Property owners for those three would still be responsible for restoration and abandonment of their existing septic tank. And a city representative will meet with the homeowners on an individual basis to determine the correct place for these tanks, also for these service stubs. We also talked about the possibility of water, municipal water service to these property owners, and Austin Utilities has evaluated the options for a municipal water system. They've evaluated...the things they've looked at would be a looped system, connections to the existing system. They've looked at main sizing ranging from 6-inch to 12-inch, and they've also looked at hydrant locations for fire protection. Water main construction would mainly be directionally drilled, and Austin Utilities staff would be constructing and installing the water main, or they'd be contracting with a directional drilling company to do that work. Again, just a drawing kind of showing the proposed layout of the water system that would again tie on near I-90 and branch out into this area servicing them. Not shown on this map, but it would also continue south toward Oakland to make another connection to the existing system to create that loop around the area. The parcel determination, parcels have been divided into two categories. We have 27 occupied residential parcels, and we have one school or church totaling 28 residential equivalent units, and each parcel has been assigned a 1, meaning that they would all be treated equal. Their assessment would all be equal, except for those three parcels would have the additional $2,000 for the low-pressure system. Assessment policy, at the last council meeting, council adopted an assessment policy for sanitary sewer, and the project cost would be financed through the wastewater treatment plant or assessment bonds. Costs would be recovered over a 15-year period. With it...if they choose to put it on their taxes, it would be assessed at 4.75%, and the project would be assessed prior to construction during the final assessment hearing. hearing. Now, the part that people were most interested in were the, was a cost breakdown, estimated cost breakdown for this project. Broken it down into four different columns. First column would be sanitary sewer. The sanitary sewer, when looking at estimated costs, the main focus here is this item in red, which is a point source implementation grant. Due to the severity of the sewer systems in this area, they are eligible for a point source implementation grant, which would cover up to 50% of the construction costs. So, construction cost being this number right here. So, in determining an estimated amount for an assessment, so that everyone has numbers to look at and things to talk about, if we were to sum up the total sanitary sewer construction costs, they would be, per parcel, just under $23,000. When we, I applied a 40% point source implementation grant, again, that could be up to 50%, but for talking purposes, we don't know what that is yet, so I applied a 40% grant to that construction cost, which brought the sanitary sewer construction cost down to estimated to be $14,800. That is with a 40% point source implementation grant. In addition, there are some gravel roads out in this area, 4th Avenue, 6th Avenue, and 30th Street. Proposed an option, an alternate for those parcels that are, there's 11 parcels that are serviced by that gravel road. We could do, turn that into an asphalt road at this time, and there would be an extra $4,650 per parcel for those 11 parcels to upgrade to an asphalt roadway. In addition, Austin Utilities has determined a $267,000 cost for water main in this area. Dividing that by the 28 total parcels comes up to $9,535.71. In addition to that, we would then have to extend services from the water main to the property line for every water service. So, there would be some additional cost to each property owner of $1,417.50. So, when adding up these columns, we have, number one, including a 40% point source implementation grant, sewer only would be estimated at $14,800. If we do sewer and we pave the gravel roads, the 11 customers that live on the gravel would have an increased cost, an assessment up to $19,447.32. Again, that's only for those 11. The remaining 17 would still be at this amount. If we add in water, ultimately, we need to add in wa...let's see here. This is adding in the sewer with the water and the water service, because these two have to go together. So, adding the sewer and the water main and the water services would be an assessment amount of $25,750. And then again, for those 11 residents, if they wanna go with everything, that sewer, water, water service, asphalt roadway, where there currently is none, it would be a $30,400 assessment. Lot of numbers there, but wanted to give people something to look at, a number to talk about. And I'll stress again, this is very variable, depending upon the point source implementation grant. We will not know what that is until after we move forward and bid the project, and I'll get into that a little bit more. But these numbers, if you are one of those three parcels that have the low-pressure system, you would need to add $2,000 to all of these numbers. Sanitary sewer for the gravity system would be extended to the property line. The homeowner would then have additional cost to extend that to the home. Same with water, if they choose to go that route as well. And I believe that is it. I'll come back to that slide as we move into questions. The payments for this, with this assessment, we would have three different payment options. Option number one would be to pay the entire amount in full by October 31st, 2014. Option number two, same as we have with our street assessments, you could pay up to at least 50%, and the remainder would go on your taxes. Again, paying that amount prior to October 31st. And the remainder that goes on your taxes would be spread out over 15 years at 4.75% interest. Or they could do nothing, and the entire amount is put on their taxes, spread out over 15 years with interest. The assessment would first show up in 2015. And if you can show that you have a compliant septic system, you would be granted a five-year time period extension. Then also, I believe, as part of that annexation agreement, homeowners were given, that have a compliant system, were given another three-year extension. If after five years, they can still prove that they have a compliant septic system, they were given another three-year extension as part of that agreement. Those parcels that do not have compliant systems would have to hook up. There is some timeframe for them as part of that annexation agreement as well. Some of them, depending on their severity of their system, would only have 30 days to hook up. Other ones would have until July of 2015 to hook up. So, again, those are some varying time periods, depending on the severity of their existing system. The next steps would be this hearing tonight, April 21st, a hearing on the improvements. We have already submitted the plans to the MPCA for their approval and review, review and approval. Once we hear back from them, we'll finalize those plans, make any changes they might have, and we would move forward to develop those plans and specifications and begin the bidding process. In June, we would receive those bids. And again, after we receive the bids, we then submit them back to the MPCA and also the Public Facilities Authority. They are the grant holder for this point source implementation grant. In June, they will then review those final numbers and make that determination as to how much of the project they would be willing to fund or assist with the funding of. After that is done, estimating sometime in July, we would hear back on that. We would then calculate those final assessments and have a meeting just like tonight, where I can narrow down that spreadsheet and give those property owners exact numbers of what those assessments would be. And then following that, we would have a final assessment hearing, again, presenting those final numbers to the council for a final determination and final assessment hearing to move forward with the project. And then it could likely start construction in August. And I would estimate this would be about a three-month project, so August, September, October, something like that timeframe. With that, that opened up to any questions?
Okay, council. How many systems are compliant right now? Or how many systems, I think you said it, but I forgot. How many are compliant?
28 parcels in total, two compliant systems. The other 26 have varying ranges of non-compliance.
But none of them could bring them into compliance and get the five-year extension?
A property owner could do that, but from a cost, there may be too much cost to put into that right now to upgrade it. It would make more sense to put that money into the new sewer system, as opposed to upgrading their existing.
But that would be allowed if that's right. I mean, I don't know anything about those systems.
Yeah, I don't think, I would not recommend that to property owners.
Council, any questions?
One thing I would like to add is, is at the informational hearing, we had a really good turnout, it's a very positive meeting. We had about 18 to 20 of the parcels of the 28 represented at the informational meeting. And at that time, I would say just a general consensus from the people present was to move forward with both sanitary and water at that meeting.
Okay. Steve, I have a question.
Yes.
Are there any parcels that do not have a building on them?
Yes, there are. As part of that yellow annexation area, there are some vacant parcels, yes.
Would they pay the same amount once the building, the lot is sold and a building is put on the property?
We are, they would pay some amount, yes. We are working on a hookup, a citywide hookup fee that they would then be charged to hook up at some time in the future if they have a vacant lot, yes.
How many people are here tonight for this issue? Raise your hands. Okay? Are, you have, this is a public hearing, and I know you have concerns. I think we did the Lansing one a couple of years ago, and it's probably the hardest thing that I've been involved in with the city. So, we're trying to be real careful on this, but who, it's a public hearing, and we're gonna turn it over to the public now. Whatever, if you have concerns, raise your hands, and we'll try and address them one at a time. Yes, sir? We need your name and where you live.
You need to come up.
Pardon?
You need to come up.
Yeah, you need to come up here and give us your name, and we're not trying to embarrass you, it's just...
It's for TV.
It's for TV.
It's for procedure.
Right, and procedure.
Yeah, I'm Larry Ashley. One thing that keeps popping up is this grant money. When I look at this one, it's about $15,000. Is that what we're expecting off of our bill?
Steven?
Yeah, that, excuse me, yes, that's correct. Without the grant, the sanitary sewer cost would be just under $23,000. By applying a grant to that, we're able to bring that cost down to the property owners of approximately $14,800, yes.
And I do know that we're trying to do this in such a way that the grant remains in place. You know, we don't use some new system that would forfeit the grant, and then everybody would have to pay the extra money. Other questions? Other concerns? Don't be shy if you have them. I mean, we, obviously, there's gonna be other meetings, one other meeting at least after this, but if you, if we haven't addressed your concerns, please let us know, because we don't know their, you know, we don't know what they are unless you talk to us. Anybody else?
I've got a question.
Sir, where?
Oh, Jeremy. If the, if the grant doesn't come through, can we reevaluate the project at that time?
Yep, at the final assessment hearing, that'll be the final time that we, the council would then move to proceed with the project or stop. And we'll know that, we'll know those final amounts and the grant amount at the final assessment hearing.
Okay.
So, I mean, we're talking some major dollars here.
The possibility of the grant not coming through, I mean, isn't the grant approved? It's just a question of the amount?
Yeah, this area has been, has been recko...yeah, there you go, pre-qualified, and now it is just a matter of getting all those final approvals.
Will the grant vary per household, or will it be the same, I mean, the same percentage for everybody?
It'll be, it'll be the same for everyone.
Okay. And do we have lots there that are, I mean, where people are gonna have to pay for two, like we did out in Lansing?
No.
Okay.
No.
I'll simplify it quick.
Mr. Mayor, there's a gentleman in the back.
Sir, who else has a question? Nope, nobody else?
Just scratching his head.
Okay. Gotta be careful scratching your head in here.
This all sounds, it all sounds very positive, and it seems like the support of the neighbors and the property owners are right where it needs to be, so I'd make the motion that we, the resolution that we go forward with this.
One second. Is there any more discussion? Anybody wanna say anything before we move forward? Okay? With, at that, Mr. Dankert, would you take a roll, please?
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, 7-0, Your Honor.
Okay, and I wanna thank everybody that came here tonight, and, you know, there's gonna be more meetings, obviously. Under petitions and requests, number nine is a motion approving a street closure. If you want, I mean, a lot of, if you've come here for that and you wanna leave now, I can't really tell you the best part of the meeting is coming, because it's not. We'll give you a minute and... Maybe they are, I don't know. They all support it?
So, that's good. I'm sure there's some...
Steven, could we maybe close the door? Sure they're gonna wanna talk out there for a little bit. Okay, moving forward, under petitions and requests, number nine is a motion approving a street closure for Vision 2020 Downtown Committee on May 30th, 2014, from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Main Street from Second Avenue to Fourth Avenue. Just need, anybody have any questions? Otherwise, we need a motion.
So moved? Was there already a motion?
Steve, did you move?
Second.
Posped. All in favor?
Aye.
Posped. Just speak up, Steve. Number 10 is a motion authorizing the placement of a tree, Growing Together logo on the North Main Street flood wall. We've also discussed this. Any questions on this? This would be a logo that we can change if we decide to go with a different logo. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posped. Item number 11 is a motion authorizing $5,000 for Phase 1 Architectural Services for Vision 2020 Community Recreation Center. Mr. Dankert.
At the last work session, the council approved allocating $5,000 towards the rec center, community rec center study through Vision 2020. There are also other funding sources, including the Homo Foundation, that I believe is contributing approximately $95,000 towards this.
Okay, questions? Comments? If there are none, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second by Judy, all in favor?
Aye.
Posped. Number 12 is a motion adopting an ordinance regarding grass and weeds on private property. Kim? You're pointing up at the sky. What's that?
There's no TV on.
Oh, I'm sorry. You can stand up if you want.
No, I don't need to. But thank you, Mayor. Okay, so at our last work session, we discussed the weed ordinance, and we made some changes. And I would just like you to approve those.
Any questions? If not, we need a motion for preparation of the ordinance. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posped. 12 B.
Adoption and publication of the ordinance.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Ordinance passes, 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 13 is a resolution approving a parking enforcement agreement between the city of Austin and Moore County. Tom, did you wanna explain that?
Sure. The Moore County Board of Commissioners have approved an agreement, and are requesting the city of Austin to approve the agreement also, which allows our police officers and the parking enforcement to monitor the Robbins Building parking and to issue citations. So, and any revenue collected from those citations would remain with the city. If their sheriff's department was monitoring the, excuse me, parking lot and issued citations, they would keep the money for it. So, this is just a formal agreement, allowing us to enforce parking in their facilities and retain the fine money for that.
Chief, what's the parking in there? How long is that? It's not the two-hour parking, is it?
Oh, that's permit parking, that Robbins block. You need a permit to park in there, so if you do not have a permit, you'll get a $10 parking citation for no permit to be in that area.
And who, how do you get the permits? And who's eligible for them, I guess? Do you have to be an employee?
Any city employees or county employees that work there can get a permit through the county.
So, it's not a public lot?
No.
And where do the public park?
The public and park, there's two- and four-hour parking stalls and also on the street for public to park.
What about the old plaza lot? Is that public parking?
Yes, it is.
And that's two- and four-hour?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for the chief. The parking adjacent to the Justice Center, closest to Paramount, that one that runs north-south, would that be open to the public for Paramount people after?
Yes, yes, it is open, but it does have a timeframe, I believe, 12-hour parking in that area also, and some four-hour parking and as well handicap parking on what used to be First Street.
Right.
Yes.
So, that is available to the public?
Yes, it is.
Any other questions? If there are none, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 14 is a motion approving... 14 is a motion approving an offer of acquisition for the property located at 504 21st Street Southwest. Mr. Lang.
The property that you have described, they have a unique situation adjacent to Turo Creek with their walkout basement that they have. There aren't very many walkouts adjacent to Turo Creek on this, on this side anyway that we are working with. And due to the complexities that they have there, we have appraised the property and would recommend acquiring the property and removal of the structure from the floodplain.
Okay, council? I see that's a Howard property there here. Any questions, Steve or Sue? Okay. Okay, with that, we will entertain motions.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pause. That was easy. Thank you. 15 is a resolution approving $9,800 out of contingency funds to be used for easement and preparation for the SEH at the Austin Municipal Airport National Guard Armory. Mr. Lang.
Yeah, this would be two actions here, and one, first approving some contingency funds to hire SEH to work with the Austin Airport and the Armory, Austin National Guard Armory, to develop necessary easements for the runway protection zone, also some site drainage easements and some access easements for the armory.
Questions, comments? We need a resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 16 is a motion authorizing the sale of public works equipment and vehicles. Mr. Lang?
Yeah, recently, I had sent out in the notes to council some information about the city public works and the Moore County Public Works Department going in on a purchase of a, an oil distributor for our seal coating operation. And now we are requesting to sell our old piece of equipment, the old seal coat oiler, along with a 1993 Ford Taurus wagon.
Any questions? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
14, 17 is a resolution accepting gift of forklift to the public works department. I guess we've got to have an explanation on this.
Yeah, we have three forklifts throughout our different public works buildings. Either those are located at the arenas or the arena storage building or also our public works facility. And in the past, Hormel has donated a used forklift for our use. And we have, one of our three forklifts is out of operation and we have requested from Hormel donating a forklift, and they have agreed to that. The current value of the forklift that they will be donating free of charge is $9,900 value and attached is a sale agreement for your approval if you have any questions.
Questions? All right, now we need a resolution move. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 18 is a resolution approving budget adjustment number two, 2013 carryover items. Mr. Dankert?
As was discussed at the last work session, annually, we bring forward a resolution requesting council to reauthorize some budget that was not spent the prior year on specific items. And as was discussed, some purchase of paper, equipment, upgrades at some municipal facilities that, again, we did not do in 2013 that we are asking you to approve for 2014.
Okay, any questions, comments? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Or, Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 19 is a resolution accepting March gifts to the library. We do this every month. Any questions? If there are none, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven zero, Your Honor.
20 is a motion approving an agreement to build form for the construction of an accessory structure requested by Robert DeVrent, 1202 10th Street Southwest. Mr. Hoyam?
If you look at, there's a provision in City Quote, Section 11.01, Subdivision 92, that addresses minimum setbacks for accessory structures in residential areas. That provision requires a minimum five-foot setback from property lines, but there, without exception, there's a language that addresses an agreement to build form. And if you look at the monitor, it shows the petitioner's property boundaries. This would be his dwelling, smaller accessory structure, and a proposed new detached garage, which is classified also as an accessory structure. It's standard policy for just the general public coming into my office to have an agreement to build for, sign, but in this particular case, the neighboring property owner is the City of Austin, so he's requesting to be able to construct this structure four feet from the property line.
Council, any questions?
He's removing his existing garage and building a new garage, is that?
Correct.
Anybody else? Do you have a recommendation on this?
I just wondered why this, does this not have to go to the planning commission? How is this different? I just need a clarification.
It's different because of the specific language in Section 11.01, Subdivision 92, that just allows a neighboring property owner for strictly accessory structures to be less than five feet from either the side or the rear property line.
Is there any reason for us not to approve this?
Not that I'm aware of.
What's on that city property or is there anything there?
I believe it's a park.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. DeVrent here? We'd ask you to speak, but I think it's going pretty good for you right now, so. Okay, we need a motion. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pause. All right, thank you. Item number 21, I believe, is a motion granting the Planning and Zoning Department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following locations. A, 1801, First Avenue Northeast to Morgan Property, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there, all in favor?
Aye.
Pause. B, 709, 9th Street Northwest, the Jetty Property, we need a motion.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pause. C is 905, First Avenue Southwest, the Schmidt Property, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pause. And finally, D, 1812, Walton Avenue East, Silakakis Property, we need a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pause.
Is this, is this 21, is this, no, never mind. This is the Jetty property? We have the Jetty property here?
Yeah, we did that, all right.
Additional backup.
I'm so confused. Okay, thank you.
And for our final item tonight, 22 is a resolution in support of municipal street improvement district legislation. Mr. Lang?
Yeah, we're just requesting authorization from the council for the mayor to sign a letter of support to our legislators supporting street improvement districts. This is just another funding tool to help us pay for, give us an option for paying for street reconstruction. Currently, we utilize assessments, state aid, allotment, and also our Street Fund 49 to pay for street reconstruction projects, and this would just be another tool to help us fund these reconstruction projects.
Council, do you have any questions on this? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Now come to reports and recommendations, and I would like to start with Judy. Judy?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Steven?
I'd like the public to know that this is the eighth annual Community Pride Day coming up on April 26th. We're going to meet down at the Plaza area across from the new Justice Center there, behind the B&amp;J. New, 9:00 AM to noon. Public is certainly welcome and encouraged to come out, and we'll give the bags and the gloves and water and coffee and hot chocolate.
Donuts.
Donuts, and to kick them off and send them on their way. They can do it in teams of their own or we can make teams for them. And it's a nice deal, we've been doing for eight years now, go up and do the cleanup city parks and around the waterways and downtown Main Street, any kind of public areas.
It really makes a difference.
This Saturday, April 26th, at 9:00 AM.
And if you like, have a certain area you like, I know the dog park people are just going to meet down there at 9:00, and if there's other areas you just wanted to do, go ahead, but you can get coffee, donuts, and hobnob a little bit beforehand if you want to go. It's at the swimming pool lot, right?